Thank you. When we broke this morning, we had completed the technical case. We took several public commenters. We're back for the final public comment session, the one o'clock session on Tuesday, and then we will close the record and proceed into the post-hearing process after public comments and verbal closing arguments. So let's see, Dr. Anne Milliken. If you would please spell your first and last name. Microphone.
Okay. Dr. Anne Milliken, A-N-N-E-M-I-L-L-I-K-I-N.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I don't have all my preparation with me. I thought I would be speaking tomorrow, but I wanted to say a few things today, and I'll put the rest in as written comment as an attachment, which I believe is good until nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Yes, Dr. Milliken asked that the deadline for submitting written public comment be extended from 5:00 p.m. today to 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. And I'm fine with that. So we will, we will do that. Anyone who would like to add to their verbal comment or just submit a written comment regardless needs to get that to Pam Jones or Luis Lopez by nine in the morning. But go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Originally, my thoughts and ideas, which I'll just put into the written part, were about the pristine nature of the Tusukie Creek, the mountain stream, and it just seemed unbelievable to me that, given how few waterways and fresh water we have in New Mexico, that it would be allowed for a private or corporation to be able to dump into this waterway, which nourishes land, people, animals, birds, the plants. It just seemed ridiculous to me at the, at the level of discharge. So that was the first thing. But yesterday, I, there were two things that surprised me. One is that the permit is for domestic discharge. And I don't understand that because it's a business as well as the eighty-four, eighty-five houses up above. And I believe twenty more houses can be built up above. So I don't understand why they're given a domestic permit rather than a business or company permit, since it's beyond the domestic ability. And the other part, as a physician and scientist as well, the elephant in the room yesterday, to me, seemed to be that no one was talking about the possibility of chemicals and medications, hormones, et cetera, that will be being discharged just by the very nature of people being on medication, probably most people in this room. And the, the permit isn't inclusive of that in terms of what they need to treat, but it does need to be treated because those things will be going into the waterways. Having a stable, having horses, horses are wormed two or three times in a year, as well as if anyone is sick, and then the horses get antibiotics. People are on hormones, they're on high blood pressure medication. All of this will be going through the system, and it will not be being treated. And the plant is obviously taking care of what it is required to take care of, but it doesn't seem to me that that is answering the problems or the issues. And yesterday, when the amazing people were discussing what was going on with the plant, and then the person this morning, yesterday, when they were asked, well, what about these, these chemicals and these plastics? And, and even if domestically, people are using vinegar and salt and phosphate-free laundry detergents up in their homes, what is Bishop's Lodge using in terms of their landscaping and all of that? None of, none of that was addressed. And yesterday, it was like, I don't believe this will happen. And I would never say that to a patient of mine. I don't believe this could happen to you from these medications. And so we all want to work together. We all want the health of, of the people downstream, of the animals. We want the health of everybody. And certainly with the pueblo people using surface water for their drinking water. So I don't see why we all can't work together. I just think we need a broader treatment plan for the reality, not what they were just required to do. And they've clearly handled that. And I believe they had to handle that because, and this is where I'll have to put it in, in terms of dates and times, but Bishop's Lodge lay fouled for quite a period of time during financial upset or whatever, and an expose was then done on it by the Santa Fe reporter. And the very next day, they started coming back to life. And I think largely it was because the Bishop's Chapel had fallen into disrepair, and it's a historic site. But since that time, as a business, I think it has had a very difficult time. And I don't think the wastewater treatment, even with what Mr. Harmio had to say this morning, was in fact up to snuff. And I believe it was 2023, but I'll put this in my written report, that actual fecal matter was found coming from Bishop's Lodge, not just E. coli, at which point they were not fined, but given a grant to build this facility, all well and good. I just think we have to be honest about what it is that's gone on and as a community, deal with it for everybody and the plants and animals that we're responsible for. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Milliken. Rick Martino. Would you spell your first and last name, please?
Sure. My name is Rick Martino.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Great. So my name is Rick Martino. I live in the hills and villas next to Bishop's Lodge. This week, I've heard concerns from many of my neighbors regarding our water supply and the importance of clean, drinkable water. I could not agree more. It's extremely important to life and the livelihood of our community. The neighborhood that we've heard from today and the families come from small farms, ranchers, artisans, artists and concerned citizens. I've also heard concerns and accusations regarding the interest of the residents of Bishop's Lodge, for which I am too very much insulted. So please allow me to provide a little more context about my family and myself. I've lived in New Mexico for nearly forty years. I've raised my children here, and I've done everything I can to ensure that they too are good stewards of the land, precious researches, resources in the community in which we live. It's not about how long one has lived in the community or what has been handed down through generation. The bank reminds me every month that I have to work for what I have. And I've learned anything from raising my children. It's that which comes too easy is less valued. I value the resources for which we rely on. I can easily say that the waste stream from my home is my only domestic waste. I love the arts, but I'm not an artist. So turpentine, mineral spirits will never be in my drain. I enjoy fresh fruit, vegetables, but I don't have trees or crops. So cleaning equipment and other use of pesticides or herbicides will not be in my waste stream. Unfortunately, I don't have horses or mules or chickens, so the cleanup of tools and equipment for vaccination and immunizations will never be in my waste stream. There's been accusation from the opposition that the villas and homes that are above Bishop's Lodge are more of a threat than the community of Bishop's Lodge or the community of Tusukie Valley. I don't understand where that accusation comes from, and I've seen no evidence of such. Over the past years, I've had the pleasure of watching Bishop's Lodge change. We walk through that property nearly every week. The development enhancements to the property are striking. And it appears to me that the management has taken a vested interest in the property and are good stewards of the land. The lodge is something we should all be proud of and hopefully work together to make sure it remains viable. New Mexico and the Tusukie Valley benefit from the tourism and recognition of this historic property. I'd also like to comment about the demonstration misleading signs and statements. We just heard from the doctor that we need to be honest with each other. I've seen the peaceful protests move from passionate demonstrations to aggressive and frankly dangerous and intimidating opposition. While I appreciate the passion for change, in my opinion, the aggression and intimidation stems from desperation and frankly should discredit the opposition. At least from a driver's safety perspective, it's been quieter the last two Saturdays. I wonder why. If you want a solution for our neighborhood, then let's work together to encourage Santa Fe to expedite the extension of sewage and water to both Bishop's Lodge and the Tusukie Valley. Obviously, in so doing, we eliminate septic tanks, which, as we heard, are the greatest risk to contamination of our precious water supply. So I'm not the boogeyman. I'm not a felon. I'm not an evil person. I'm not a faceless opposition. I'm your neighbor, a concerned citizen and a law-abiding vested member of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Ellen Humphries. Would you spell out your first and last name, please?
Yes, Ellen, E.L.L.E.N. Humphries, H.U.M.P.H.R.E.Y.S.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Hearing Officer. I am a Tusukie resident. I live downstream of Bishop's Lodge, and I work in film and television. Although I am an artist, I am a deep believer in science. And though I am the one individual in my five-person immediate family who's not an attorney by trade, I am a deep believer in the system and the rule of law. And because of my deep belief in science and the law, I understand that they are both fallible. If some in this room believe that to adhere to the law is to blindly follow it, I fear where they would stand in a similar courtroom 150 years ago when the law stated that Black and Indigenous Americans and women were inferior to white men. If some in this room think that to believe science is to blindly follow it in its current state, I fear where they would stand some 100 years ago when science believed it was safe to dump industrial waste into drinking water for uranium to be disposed of in Indigenous communities and for girls to use their tongues to shape the tip of their radium-covered paintbrushes into points, causing their mouths to rot away while they still lived. Though perhaps that was never science. Those beliefs were built by industry. Bishop's Lodge is in the industry of tourism, not science. Respectfully, Madam Hearing Officer, I acknowledge the professional experience of the experts yesterday, but I would urge you to consider that those were simply people employed by Bishop's Lodge, stating that they believed they did their job well. I'm sure that they think they do. They also chose to dump that effluent at the downstream edge of their property. If it's really so safe, why not dump it at the top, where they're drinking the same thing we're drinking? This fairly clear jar of water we saw yesterday is graded for food crop irrigation. It is not graded as safe to drink. If it was, they would drink it. We are a community. We are not crops. To my understanding, modern science does not have a full picture of what is hazardous to human health. The lodge's own experts did not speak to the thorough and complete safety of the effluent being discharged because they have no idea if it's safe or not. They admitted, in order to safely plan for what the effluent should be tested for, they need to know what's in the effluent. That is different with individuals. Sure, one guy can act right, but a thousand people in one source is our problem. New pharmaceuticals, new cleaning products, new crop and grass fertilizers, pool chemicals are being developed every year, every day, and it's not possible for science to keep up with the study of how all of these compounds interact with each other. The lodge is only testing for three of forty potentially hazardous substances from, of course, as we just talked about, their multiple commercial businesses, not just homes. Fifty years ago, we didn't know that Roundup was hazardous to our health.
Ms. Humphries, slow down just a little.
Thank you. Fifty years ago, we didn't know that Roundup was hazardous to our health. What will be, what will we be saying fifty years from today? I'm almost done, I promise. Contaminated groundwater remediation, to my understanding, is virtually impossible. What we do here will affect my neighbors and our families and our future generations. It will not affect you. It will not affect the folks in the hills and villas. Doing the right thing for someone else, I recognize, is even more difficult than what I sit here today to do. But you have the chance to do the right thing, even if it's difficult, even if it's expensive. So I will leave you with a final question. Fifty years from today, what do you want your legacy to be? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Andrea Gates. Andrea Gates. If you would please spell your first and last name.
Andrea Gates, A-N-D-R-E-A-G-A-T-E-S.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Gates, and I am the general manager at Bishop's Lodge. I have the honor of working with 251 team members, and we are deeply committed not only to providing excellent service to our guests and neighbors, but also to protecting the environment, a value that lies at the heart of our culture. Bishop's Lodge has long been a part of Santa Fe. The hotel is proud to contribute in a positive way and be a good neighbor to this wonderful community. With these goals in mind, Bishop's Lodge and the Hills and Villas community replaced the old wastewater treatment system with a new state-of-the-art facility that meets or exceeds all local and national standards. In response to the community, Bishop's Lodge also added a low-dosing area that captures the fully-treated water in the winter months. And to help preserve important groundwater during the rest of the year, the reclaimed water is recycled for an onsite irrigation. Having worked closely with the New Mexico Environmental Department to meet and exceed all requirements with the new facility, the hotel and the Hills and Villas community looks forward to having the permit application approved and to continue to be a strong contributor to our vibrant community of Santa Fe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. Vivette, Vivette Hunt. I'm sorry. It's hard. Oh, yes, Joanna Angie. Sure. All right. Oh, that's fine.
Madam Hearing Officer.
Ms. Mulcahy.
I believe this individual, both of these individuals have already provided comments.
Not Joanna Angie.
Yes, I'm the only one commenting. He's just running the computer phone.
I believe she commented yesterday.
I did not.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I've not made any comments.
I'm, I'm keeping track, Ms. Mulcahy. And thank you for your assistance, sir. Let's see. Ms. Angie, would you spell your first and last name?
My name is Joanna Angie. My first name is spelled J.O.A.N.N.A. My last name is spelled A.N.G.I.E.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Okay. I'm a community-engaged artist. I'm the founder and former director of a nationally-recognized art center for over 20 years. I've worked with Cuyuga, Seneca, and Iroquois people on numerous projects for 10 years. I've worked with Louis Groucho's of Santa Fe when he was director of the Albright Knox Museum. I've worked with the Canadian consulate's office on numerous art and water projects. My partner worked on the designation of the Niagara River for 15 years, and it was approved. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have handed in images from the Tusuke Elementary and Talia Elementary School children. They wanted to present their images and a signature board. This represents 140 children. I will sum up their message. Save the water, save the people, save the pueblo. More than 1,100 people have signed our petition to save the water, and I think we can state that the 460 people of the Tusuke Pueblo have spoken as well. The vast majority of people in Tusuke want clean water. I would like to show some images of Tusuke. This is Bishop's Lodge's horse field with water coming in. This was approximately a two-inch rainfall. And this was in 2018. These are just some, you can keep going. These are images adjoining the field, and this is just mud sludgeing in. I don't know what that green thing is. So I'm just going to let this roll for a minute. Just that you can get a sense of when we get next to the... This is the aurorio, that their bridges are on both sides of this aurorio. This is the drain that is supposed to allow, that was the drain that was supposed to allow the water through, fogged with mud. You don't have to show that. This is another area that is not on Bishop's Lodge property. It's just an aurorio that's been clogged from extreme water coming down. This is the two-inch marker from 2018, showing that the water came down to two inches. This is the Tusuke Village. And this is the sand that washed down Bishop's Lodge Road and down the aurorios, and does so continuously. This is Bishop's Lodge Road underwater. I have to go a little faster. This is continuation of Bishop's Lodge Road underwater. The aurorios are already full in these scenarios. This is a picture of Bishop's Lodge Bridge in 2022 with a 20-foot-five-wide foot swath of water coming at, adjoining the leach field area. On the opposite side, we did not go further into Bishop's Lodge property to take a picture of the creek at that same time because we didn't feel it was appropriate. You can continue now. Okay. The leach field is between this flooding zone and the creek. So both the creek and this aurorio were flooding, and the leach field is being released between these zones. And directly next to the leach field is the septic plant. So a very real threat is closing in on us on climate change and a poorly-placed sewage plant and leach field in a flood zone. You are seeing images from 2018, 2022, and 2024. This is what two inches of rain does in Tusuke over a very short time span. Now that the sewage facility is operating, it's only a matter of time before wastewater streams downhill. A failure is inevitable where it is currently located. I will cite the example, in Buffalo, New York, a state-of-the-art sewage plant with potable water was located near the Niagara River. A few years ago, it overflowed for three days straight into the Niagara River and turned Niagara Falls brown from extreme rain caused by climate change. And now Bishop's Lodge is positioning to have the same sort of disaster. Save the water, save the people, save the pueblo. I wanted to tell you about my hikes and the animals I live with in Tusuke, the bear in my driveway, the bull deer in my yard, and the mountain lion that occasionally sleeps on my roof. I want them to have clean water. The stars and the silence in Tusuke, I came here for this pristine environment. Jennifer Capital's parameters for commercial and real estate lending include short-term to medium-term financing for transitional distressed assets. They typically buy on the low side, 25 million, and spend up to 500 million on renovation of a property. I got this information from their website. They utilize funds with tools of acquisition, bankruptcy, discount notes, and loans to redevelop, construct, and restructure. The goal is frequently to resell in two to five years. Why was the sewage plant placed in an entrance to a flood zone? It was affordable to reuse the existing systems. The septic lines were already in place from Bishop's Lodge Resort. My ideal scenario, move the sewage plant up the hill out of sight on the large parcel to the right of the old horse field area. It's a safe place. And while we're at it, let's move the horses out of the flood zone. Build a water feature in the flood zone at the entrance. It would be beautiful. We all make assumptions, and sometimes we have bad judgment. I am choosing not to be critical of Bishop's Lodge, to find a new way forward, to operate truly as a community where all the stakeholders must be at the table. It is our only path forward, or is it courtrooms? Perhaps everyone must change their course to make this a better world for children in the future of Tusuke. So let us listen to the pueblo. Let us learn from the pueblo. Let us communicate and work together to resolve this issue as a community. Protect Tusuke is taking steps to help rectify septic system problems throughout the community. Brochures have been made that teach proper care of septic systems, and a program is being developed to fund new tanks for the people in Tusuke who cannot afford them with filters. I am closing with a request of the judge to please listen to the elders of the pueblo. They speak the truth. I know you felt it in your heart when they spoke. The children of our community are asking to be protected, and you have images of that. Let us be guided by those that do not put money before people or animals or the earth. With appreciation, please, save the water, save the people, save the pueblo. And I also am the person who started protest. And I will stand. I'm a tenacious person, and I'm not a quitter. And there is no one aggressive in my group. And I will not say bad things about what's happened to us. But I will say that there is no one that's aggressive in my group. We have coffee, we eat pastry out there. We did play drums last week. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Angie.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mr. Surrattkin, for your technical assistance there. Vivette Hunt.
I'm reprising that role, so.
All right. Ms. Hunt, if you would spell your first and last name, please.
Yes, Vivette Hunt, V.I.V.I.E.T.T.E., last name H.U.N.T.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
Can we wait for the exhibits?
Do you want the first one or the...?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. No.
You want the image?
No, the...
What, the other?
Sorry.
Well, he's setting up. Let me just mention that Ms. Angie had shared with me that stack of posters made by children and that she referred to in her comment there. I did take a photographic image of that stack and will include it in the record once the photos are uploaded to the Doc and It Matters page at some point.
Yeah, I'm online.
Thank you, Hearing Officer, for this opportunity to speak. I am the owner of the third well down gradient from Bishop's Lodge wastewater system, treatment system, and the low disposal area. My well is the only source of drinking water and sustains our family, dog, and the ecology of the land, including gardens, trees, bees, plants, and animal wildlife. I have personally experienced noticeable health benefits from drinking the pristine waters in the valley since moving to Tusuke in 2018. It is for this reason I purchased fresh vegetables from the downstream farm at Tusuke Pueblo, because I know their produce is being nourished by these waters. I deeply, deeply appreciate the access I have to pristine water and understand the importance of preserving this. I heard a lot of testimony from various experts yesterday who clearly demonstrated the effectiveness of a state of... who clearly demonstrated the effectiveness of a state-of-the-art system in regards to nitrates, dissolved solids, and chloride. While I'm deeply grateful for the expertise and research that went into these efforts, I have to ask, at a time when reputable scientists are publishing studies weekly, if not daily, about the alarming effects of other emerging contaminants such as forever plastics and pharmaceutical residues in our soils, waterways, humans, plants, and wildlife, are we narrowly focusing on three contaminants? We need to look forward, not backward. We can no longer afford to adhere to minimum requirements when water treatment and discharge systems are being installed in vulnerable areas such as flood zones, on highly transmittable soils, and so close to our water table, while ignoring such contaminants as PFAS and pharmaceutical residues. Yesterday, the experts confirmed that what is discharged will end up in the drinking water of my close down gradient well. Yesterday, it was also confirmed that this system is not filtering out forever plastics or pharmaceutical residues, or even periodically testing for these before or after treatment. The burden of testing is being placed on down gradient neighbors like myself. These tests are expensive. They start at thirty-five hundred dollars and increase significantly depending on the panel. The party generating the waste should absorb all risk and expense rather than placing these on me and my other down gradient neighbors. Only a few weeks ago... Only a few weeks ago, I received a letter from NMED by post and by email. The monitor... Okay, well, eventually, the monitor above me will show an excerpt from this letter, which clearly states, clearly stating that the soil as deep as twenty-three feet could be affected by this system. I heard in testimony yesterday that the water table ranges from four to fifteen feet below... Sorry. Oh, four to fifteen feet below the low dose disposal area, depending on the time of the year. Why is NMED considering a permit for discharge that may contain toxic pollutants and overlaps with the water table? Why can't we live in a community where everyone is cared for? I wholeheartedly support Tesuke Pueblo's request to require this mammoth operation to tie into a municipal system where it can be further treated and with the proper oversight. I urge you to protect clean water by denying this proposed permit until all environmental and public health concerns are adequately addressed. I further challenge Bishop's Lodge, NMED, and UMSorth to be leaders in raising the bar for safeguarding water. It is critical that we all do better. Denying this permit and going back to the drawing board to explore options where all community is cared for is a solid first step. Thank you for your consideration and for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, and again, Mr. Surratt.
Good.
Is there anyone else in the room who has not yet offered comment? Who would like to offer their comment now? This is the final opportunity. No? Louise, is there anyone on the platform raising their digital hand? Who would like to offer comment from the platform?
Not at this moment, Madam Hearing Officer.
All right, thank you. At this point, then, we will close the evidentiary record. Completed both the technical case and the opportunities for public comment, and we will turn to closing arguments. Ms. Mulcahy, if you would, and again, please keep it under twenty minutes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. The science and the law must govern this process. Madam Hearing Officer, thank you for the opportunity to present our evidence on this permit. You have heard from seven expert witnesses who all agree that this permit should be made final and issued. First, you heard from Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee is a licensed professional engineer, a board-certified environmental engineer, and has designed wastewater treatment facilities and infrastructure all over the world, including at Bishop's Lodge. The Lodge's MBR plant utilizes a multi-step treatment train that so thoroughly treats the Lodge's domestic wastewater that the discharge meets all applicable water quality standards and is considered Class 1A reclaimed water. That is the highest quality of reclaimed water under the NMED's guidance. In fact, the water quality is so clean that it can be reused in irrigation of food crops like fruit trees. Both Mr. Lee and NMED testified that the design and engineering of the low dose disposal area enhances soil absorption because of highly controlled dispersal of the water into the field. The low dose disposal area is not a leach field in the way that people normally use that term. It is not a leach field because the Lodge does not use the soil to treat the effluent at all. The Lodge fully treats the effluent before one drop of it ever touches the ground. Second, you heard from Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce is a geohydrologist with thirty years of experience in geology, hydrology, groundwater monitoring, and groundwater contamination. He is the geohydrologist that oversees the Lodge's compliance with its existing discharge permit. Going to pull something up here. Mr. Pierce has analyzed and mapped the hydrology and geology of the basin. This mapping is depicted here on Slide ten. This same map also appears in Mr. Boots', Mr. Pierce's testimony at Exhibit A two. He has studied this formation. He knows it. Mr. Pierce has also determined that the two monitoring wells to the north and west of the low dose disposal area are in the correct location and provide accurate sampling of groundwater flowing down gradient from the Lodge. These two down gradient monitoring wells are depicted in Slide eleven of Mr. Pierce's testimony. You can see them on this map as NMW three and MW two. This same map also appears in our testimony at Exhibit A four. Mr. Pierce concluded that the Lodge's quarterly monitoring reports demonstrate that its effluent meets all applicable water quality standards and that the disposal area is not impacting down gradient groundwater quality. We know this. There is data on this. Third, you heard from Mr. Leader. He is a New Mexico licensed professional engineer and has fifty years of experience in water and wastewater treatment, operations, maintenance, design, and ground and surface water discharge permitting. He compared the numeric discharge limit to the Lodge's draft DP seventy-five and the numeric limits in five other discharge permits in Northern Santa Fe County that treat wastewater, specifically domestic wastewater. He demonstrated that the Lodge's numeric discharge limits are equivalent to or more stringent than all five other discharge permits in Northern Santa Fe County, including the Paseo Real wastewater treatment plant, which is the plant that several public commenters stated Bishop's Lodge should be pumping its wastewater to for treatment. But the draft DP seventy-five numeric discharge limits are more stringent than the limits in the Paseo Real discharge permit. He testified that the Lodge treats only domestic wastewater. He further testified that no other wastewater treatment plant in the entire state samples, monitors, or reports on all forty-six constituents in twenty-point-six-point-two-point-thirty-one-oh-three. In his opening, Mr. Nasco promised you that we didn't know anything about the constituents in the Lodge's wastewater beyond the four constituents regulated in the draft DP seventy-five permit. But in fact, we do know. As you heard, we know that the Lodge has sampled for both PFAS and heavy metals. And the sampling results demonstrate that PFAS and heavy metals in the Lodge's effluent were either entirely undetectable or well within groundwater quality standards. You also heard from NMED that pharmaceuticals are not a regulated constituent under the New Mexico Groundwater Quality Regulations, and that there is no groundwater discharge permit in the entire state that samples for pharmaceuticals. Fourth, you heard from Mr. Fusion. Mr. Fusion is a New Mexico Certified Water Operator Level Three, New Mexico Certified Wastewater Operator Level Three, and an instructor for wastewater certification courses in this state. He operates the Lodge's MBR treatment plant. He testified that the treatment plant has both routine and emergency processes in place to ensure the proper operation and maintenance of the plant. You heard from Mr. Fusion about the extensive physical and process inspection that the operators conduct every single time onsite at the treatment plant. The physical and process inspections at the plant are in addition to preventative maintenance that is done regularly. You also heard NMED testify that these inspections, including sight, smell, and touch, are first indicators that leads to further testing if they believe anything is wrong with the plant. It is a starting point, not an ending point. Finally, Mr. Fusion testified that the MBR treatment plant has twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five continuous remote monitoring. Finally, we also heard from NMED. We heard from three scientists at NMED. NMED's panel of experts testified that the constituents regulated in a groundwater discharge permit, like the Lodge's, are based on extensive scientific research, data, and decades of regulatory experience. NMED knows the difference between domestic wastewater and industrial wastewater. They know that domestic wastewater has a reasonable potential to contain four constituents that are regulated in the Lodge's draft DP seventy-five. And they know that the Lodge does not need to sample or monitor for constituents that are just not going to be present in domestic wastewater. You heard also from NMED that the Lodge has been previously permitted for the same thirty thousand gallons per day that the Lodge is asking for now. That is absolutely true. But the administrative record also shows that for most of the Lodge's seven permits, the Lodge was permitted for discharges that were larger than the current discharge permit of fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty gallons. The nineteen-seventy-nine permit was for twenty-five thousand gallons per day. The nineteen-eighty-four permit was for twenty-five thousand gallons per day. The nineteen-eighty-nine permit was for thirty-five thousand gallons per day. The nineteen-ninety-four permit was for thirty-five thousand gallons per day. The nineteen-ninety-eight permit was for fifty thousand gallons per day. The two thousand and four permit was for fifty thousand gallons per day. So was the two thousand and eleven permit, also fifty thousand gallons. Two thousand and sixteen permit, fifty thousand gallons. The current permit was for fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty gallons per day, the smallest volume of discharge in the permit's entire history. We are asking to go back to something that we've already had and that the science demonstrates is perfectly fine. The NMED has also demonstrated that the low dose disposal area is only used during limited times each year when the Lodge cannot irrigate with the reclaimed wastewater because the ground is frozen or the weather does not permit it. The NMED testified that the disposal area is properly sized because, one, the discharged effluent is so high quality; two, that there are no organic constituents in the effluent; three, the disposal area is only for dispersal, not treatment; four, the slow rate of dispersal in the area means that the system performs better over time and can manage peak flows better; five, there is disinfection prior to discharge; and six, and finally, the nitrogen limit in the draft DP is so stringent. Protect Tesuke has amplified the misinformation and completely ignored the science here. Because Protect Tesuke has alleged that the draft permit conditions are inadequate, Protect Tesuke has the burden to demonstrate as much. Protect Tesuke has not met this burden. The administrative record reflects that the current owners of the Lodge, Juniper Capital, took possession on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Five days later, on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, they hired Mr. Lee to begin designing the upgraded wastewater treatment plant at the Lodge. On January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, the Lodge submitted a preliminary engineering report for the treatment plant to the New Mexico Environment Department. The timeline shows that the current owners have prioritized the wastewater treatment plan. Juniper had no control over what happened before they became the owners of the Lodge. A public commenter discussed some flooding that occurred in two thousand and eighteen. That was more than three years before Juniper ever came to own the Lodge. But Juniper has done everything that they can to get a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility up and running at the Lodge. The science shows that the draft DP seventy-five that NMED issued to Bishop's Lodge in September of two thousand and twenty-four will not result in concentrations in excess of the water quality standards in twenty-point-six-point-two-point-thirty-one-oh-three. Because the draft DP seventy-five will not result in an excess of the New Mexico groundwater quality standards, the law requires that the draft DP seventy-five be made final and issued. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Ms. Weatherly, would you like to offer some oral closing argument?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Through its written and oral testimony, the Groundwater Quality Bureau of the New Mexico Environment Department has shown that the draft discharge permit for Bishop's Lodge was properly issued pursuant to the requirements of the Water Quality Act and the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations, that all regulatory requirements were met in the Bureau's evaluation and processing of the permit renewal and modification application, and all regulatory requirements involving public notice and participation have been met. Mr. Herman, the Pollution Prevention Section Manager of the Groundwater Quality Bureau, has testified to the requirements of the Water Quality Act and the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations, which are the applicable law and regulations governing groundwater discharge permits, including Bishop's Lodge's discharge permit number seventy-five. Mr. Herman presented testimony on the basis for Bishop's Lodge to obtain a groundwater discharge permit. The applicant is discharging effluent in a manner such that effluent may move directly or indirectly into groundwater. The discharge effluent... The discharge effluent may move into groundwater of the state of New Mexico, which has an existing total dissolved solid concentration of less than ten thousand milligrams per liter. The discharge is into or within a place of withdrawal of groundwater for the present or reasonable foreseeable future. And the discharge effluent is not subject to any of the exemptions of twenty point six point two point thirty one oh five A NMAC. Mr. Herman explained the department's processes in evaluating applications and issuing discharge permits and the components and the general terms and conditions included in all discharge permits issued by the department. He also explained the public participation process requirements under the Water Quality Act and the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations. Ms. Young, the Pollution Prevention Section Large Systems Domestic Waste Team Lead, has testified to the history and development of discharge permit number seventy five, which was first introduced on July, or excuse me, was first issued on July eleventh, nineteen seventy nine, and has been renewed seven times in the last forty six years. Ms. Young testified that the Bureau has complied with the regulations in the development of the draft permit. Ms. Young discussed the protective nature of the draft permit, including the increase of the authorized discharge volume from fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty gallons per day to thirty thousand gallons per day, the change in treatment technology and improvement in effluent water quality, and the addition of Class One A reclaimed domestic wastewater for primary irrigation purposes. Ms. Young has also testified to the one hundred and forty six comments received on the draft discharge permit, including eighty requests for this hearing, as well as the changes proposed in the revised draft permit following the receipt of those public comments. It is the revised draft permit, which was filed as NME D exhibit eight, that the Bureau is requesting be approved by the Cabinet Secretary. To complete its compliance with the regulations, the Bureau will respond, or excuse me, the Bureau will provide a response to all public comment received. Ms. Carpenter, Pollution Prevention Section Water Resource Professional Three, has testified to the disposal field design principles generally and how those design principles were evaluated by the Bureau and applied to Bishop's Lodge. All the factors taken in aggregate make the proposed low pressure dosing field disposal plan compliant with the discharge permit and serves the facility's needs while also protecting public health and the environment. The testimony and evidence offered by the Bureau has shown that the Bureau has given a thorough and complete administrative technical review of the application in this matter and has ensured that it meets all of the legal and technical requirements of the Water Quality Act and the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations. In addition, the Bureau has fulfilled all regulatory requirements associated with the permitting action and this hearing. The Bureau recommends that the Cabinet Secretary approve the revised draft discharge permit for the renewal and modification of DP seventy five. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly, Mr. Nasco.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer, and thank you, Counsel. Madam Hearing Officer, I'd like to start out by being very clear about one thing. Protect Tassuki is not contesting the conditions of this proposed permit. Protect Tassuki is contesting that Bishop's Lodge, the resort, has satisfied its burden under the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations, established that its activities under this permit will not degrade groundwater, and as a result, permit would not be protective of groundwater. In order to understand that, I think we need to step back a moment and look at the background and the backdrop of this facility. It's unique. I know we've heard a lot about other permits and what they test for in the domestic wastewater world, wastewater world. But this is certainly a unique setting. We have, as our three D model depicts, hundreds of downstream water wells relied on for the community of Tassuki for drinking water and irrigation purposes. Now, compounding that fact is we have a situation where the disposal field is placed probably in the most hazardous location it could be placed in this property, right at the edge of the facility so that any mishap, if one were to occur, would immediately affect downstream neighbors. That's the problem. So at bottom, what are we dealing with here? Are we dealing with nitrates or chlorides or TDS? No, we're not. I think it's fairly obvious that the resort has retained competent hydrogeologists to design that system to cover those bases. The problem is, because of the unique location of this facility in relation to its downstream neighbors, it's the known unknowns that we have to be wary of. Now, you can say all you want. It's been said. You can say it over and over that the resort complies with all three one oh three standards. But the problem with saying it over and over doesn't make it true. And I don't know if it's true. I'm not telling you it's false. But they don't know it's true either. And the Environment Department certainly does not know it's true. No one knows it's true because this permit application is woefully deficient in that it has never adequately characterized the effluent. It certainly has never adequately characterized the effluent. If that were done, and the leach field moved to a different location, we probably wouldn't be here today. There hasn't been any characterization of it. So what do we have? We have a situation where we're permitting something on the basis that any mishap will become remedial instead of the permit becoming preventative. And I would respectfully submit that the charge under the Ground and Surface Water Protection Regulations is to protect groundwater, not to remedy or abate groundwater after a mishap occurs, which is certainly also part of the regulations. But we shouldn't be issuing permits based on Mr. Herman's statement, "Well, if something happens, we got this camera in our possession." Fifteen thousand dollars per day per violation, and that should be sufficient. Well, again, that's remedial, not preventative. We want to be preventative here. So we don't know. They don't know. No one here knows. So we're talking about the unknowns, but they're known unknowns because we have the three one oh three standards that we ought to be looking at. So what happens? What's this really all about? Well, given the location of this disposal field, given the total absence of testing for three one oh three standards, other than one or two tests for some metals, it's obviously the system didn't abate. And the PFAS tests, they showed, nothing's been done. And this is not a typical domestic wastewater discharger. This is one who is acting as though it were a public utility. It's aggregating wastes from eighty three property owners. More than that, though, it's taking wastes from a variety of different sources in its business operations, including agriculture, horses, machine cleaning, we don't know, laundry, thousands of guests who we have no idea what they're going to put down the sinks, no idea whatsoever. And I'm not suggesting anything nefarious. By the way, I want to make something very clear. The village people, owners, I was just about calling them village people. But the very, very responsible owners who've made public comment here, no one's suggesting that they're going to do anything other than what is totally appropriate the ones who justify here. But that doesn't matter because what we don't know is there's, what we do know is there's no individuated responsibility if someone at the villages does have a mishap. We know that all the residents up the valley, yeah, they've got septic systems, but they have individuated responsibility enforcement mechanisms to be levied against them if something were to happen. Here, the applicant Bishop's Lodge has no idea what's going into its system, none whatsoever, other than the typical constituents of liquid waste. They don't know what else is going in there. So now we have a burden shifting. What if something happens because of the location of this disposal field? Well, now we said, too bad. And Ms. Mulcahy, I appreciate her comment that the monitoring well is going to pick it up. By the time a monitoring well picks it up, it's too late. When a monitoring well picks it up downstream, that means the contaminant has been introduced into the aquifer and is now directly endangering water wells. So those residents now have to do something. So what's going to happen? Mr. Herman's going to issue his fines and penalties. Bishop's Lodge is going to get an order against him to go abate the problem, and presumably they're going to do it. But we all know, those of us who've been in this field for a long time, know that's not easy. So the idea is to be preventative, not remedial. And again, I'm not here to denigrate, chastise, or in any way criticize the resort's treatment system nitrogen. And I'm not here to tell you that Mr. Fusion isn't going to be a good operator. I'm sure he is. But he doesn't have the capability or the tools to detect the known unknowns that might come through the system. He's already admitted as such. Let's look at what we have here. The whole permit application, if we're looking at the burden of proof, here's what it's coming down to. The resort is suggesting, you, Madam Hearing Officer, that the "I have no reason to believe" standard is sufficient. I have no reason to believe that anything other than nitrates, chlorides, and TDS are going to enter this system when they don't know. They simply don't know. So I think it's important to note that the resort's exhibit one indicating the presence of metals really establishes my point. Because, yeah, they were below the three one oh three standards on metals, but that's on Tuesday. What about Thursday? I don't know. Who knows? But the point is, they made it through the system. It might be naturally occurring. They might be from an extraneous source. It doesn't matter. Point is, they made it through the system. And Mr. Fusion, to his credit, admitted. Let me back up first because I think you need to preface this. How is he going to determine potential hazards of constituents beyond nitrates? We said it's going to use the sight, smell, and hearing test. Completely human experience. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't believe that's any way to run a railroad to determine that by sight something is wrong. He admitted that in order to determine whether those metals were present, you'd have to undergo analytical testing. So we have all these known unknowns, and the resort simply hasn't met its burden. This permit application is not ready for primetime. What has to happen is the application has to be redone. There has to be a proposal, A, to either move the leach field or the disposal field, as they like to call it. That's fine with me if they call it that. And they got to test the effluent. We got to characterize the effluent adequately to know what's there on a regular basis for a while. Perhaps don't have to do it nonstop, but they got to know what they're treating. Secondly, they need to do a fulsome analysis of the effluent, not just chlorides, nitrates, and TDS. They need to analyze from the three one oh three standards because of the uniqueness of this location and their proximity to their downstream neighbors. The risks are too high to do otherwise. I know no other permit in New Mexico has imposed this, but I would respectfully suggest to everyone in the room that no other permit in New Mexico has this potential for harm because of the location of the leach field, because of the location of the downstream neighbors. But I think that's what has to be done with involvement from the community, and then the burden could perhaps be met, that this would be protective of groundwater because if we know what we're treating, in other words, the known unknowns become the knowns. I don't think that's too much to ask. So, Madam Hearing Officer, I respectfully request that the permit application be denied for failure to meet the burden to protect groundwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nasco. All right, let's see. Anything else for re-adjourned? As I said, the deadline for submitting written public comment, this is non-technical written public comment, has been extended from five o'clock today to nine o'clock tomorrow morning. And you would send that to Pamela Jones or Luis Lopez? Thank you all very much.
Madam Hearing Officer.
Ms. Mulcahy.
I just wanted to, if we could, talk about deadlines for findings of fact and conclusions of law?
Yes, thank you very much. So as I said yesterday, there are several steps in the post-hearing process which play out over the next couple of months. As I understand it from our fine court reporter, he will have the transcript completed by next week. You will be notified of the day that he files that transcript with the Office of Public Facilitation. And from there, we can count thirty days. That's what twenty point one point four provides for the parties to submit any written closing argument. They would like to submit any proposed findings and conclusions, whatever you'd like for me to consider. In addition to the evidentiary record, would be submitted within thirty days. I then have a maximum of thirty days to write a report. You then have ten or fifteen days, I can't remember, to throw rocks at it. And then everything is bundled up and provided to the Cabinet Secretary, and his final order should be signed within thirty days after that. Now, unless you're proposing some other timeline, the opportunities to make the post-hearing process shorter are that I can get my report in earlier than thirty days, and the Cabinet Secretary often also shortens his time.
Okay, that works. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all, and have a safe drive home.